Good afternoon and welcome. First order of business, I'd like to ask everyone to turn their cellphones off or silent. The other thing, and I'm really, really pleased to see so many people here, but I've got some bad news and I'll allow some time for you to leave after you hear this, but we've run out of cheese. Alright, I saw Giff Brown get up to leave, I knew why he was here. Okay, it's been only about seven weeks since Irma hit Naples and Stonebridge. For those of us who, those of, who've lived through the storm, it's certainly a memory that's gonna last a long time. For those who arrived in the last two weeks, it's probably difficult for you to imagine what Stonebridge looked like immediately after the storm. But, you can see how well we've done in terms of recovery. We were lucky in some ways, we had only one storm-related injury which occurred during the aftermath. None of our members were stranded during the evacuation, and the communal effort and cooperation in the week that followed the storm was inspirational. Were we as prepared as we should have been for Irma? No. Was the storm itself as bad as the week that followed? No. Can we do better? Yes. Will we soon be back to what we were before Irma? No. In addition to the economics involved in recovery and restoration, we need to keep in mind several factors. First, what we lost was mature landscaping, much of which was 30 years old. We would struggle to find and it'd be unlikely to be able to afford to buy 30-year-old plantings. Additionally, nurseries were hit hard by Irma, so supplies are going to be limited. And it is unlikely that the planting of the new landscaping can occur before this summer, and it is also likely that it will continue beyond the summer. So we asked for patience, we saw great patience during the storm, and we asked for patience going forward. The economics of what we face are daunting. Today, I'm happy to tell you, we're gonna be able to give you some idea of what the range is that we're gonna be looking at in terms of our expenses. We've incurred significant expenses for removing the debris and the fallen trees, and the cost of replacing it, as I said, is gonna be very substantial. Members are right to be concerned about an anticipated assessment. Someone at one of the meetings said to me, "You know, we're all concerned, what can you tell us about the assessment?" And I said, "There will be an assessment." But, we have better information now and we can, we can give you a little bit more detail with regard to that. Today, what we're here for is to review and update you on the consequences of the hurricane and the planning that's been undertaken to better deal with the next one. I've got wood here, so I hope we're not facing another storm, but hurricane season is not over. Our presentation is gonna separately address the role of the members, that is your role, the role of the members who stay onsite during the storm and afterward, and the role of the club. They're different, and the expectations need to be different. In particular, with regard to the role of the club, I'd ask you to consider that our employees all have families and homes of their own. Many of our employees evacuated and left the area. So the club's capacity to respond to the storm is limited by the fact that its employees have to take care of their own homes and then come back here. What was amazing is how quickly so many of our employees were able to do that and were able to return to work here at Stonebridge. That distinction is part of the reason why we actually shut down operations in advance of the storm, and that is why we need members to have a plan to carry out in order to deal with the storm, since the members who are onsite are the ones who are going to have to deal with it during and immediately after the storm. After I got here, which was about a week after Irma, I asked for a group of members to get together, these were members who had been present during the storm and who had worked tirelessly to address the member needs, and I wanted to talk about how we could better respond. What, what everyone seemed to agree upon is that while we had a plan in place, its implementation was complicated by many factors. So it seemed to be necessary to make a change in our crisis management policy and how we responded. To that end, shortly after the storm, I asked the board at a special meeting to consider a reconfiguration of our member-centered disaster preparedness organization. This resulted in the creation of a new committee called a Crisis Response Committee. The objective in creating this committee and repopulating this committee was to continue to recognize the need to prepare and the need to plan, but also to emphasize how important it was to be sure that the plan was carried out. You're gonna hear today what we've done in order to respond, you're gonna hear from members of that new Crisis Response Committee. But on behalf of the board, I would like to thank everyone who helped in the efforts to prepare for and recover from the storm. We are especially grateful to Tim, to Mark, to Kathleen, and all our dedicated staff. Don't worry, Mark, I'm not gonna ask you to speak. Many members who were here stepped up to help, and some, like the Willow Bend owners who offered their units to house those without power, were inspirational in their generosity. That, that was an amazing day, and I think Hal will agree, we, we spent that Friday, I think it was, with power back at Willow Bend, but many areas of Stonebridge without power, and I was, because of where I was, I would have better communications through email, and I was communicating through email with Willow Bend owners who were calling into me to say, "Yeah, go ahead, use my place, I'll tell you where the, you know, where to get the key," things like that, and Hal was trying to figure who we were gonna put into those different units who still didn't have power. Turned out by the end of the day that most of Stonebridge did have power back, but it, it really was something, the response of our members, and those, those members in Willow Bend, it was amazing. The two members I shared most of my remote communications with were Peter Fleming and Hal Hills. They were heroic in their efforts. I think the Fleming house became the command post by default. Of course, Peter and Hal paid for that by being appointed co-chairs of the new Crisis Response Committee. So today, we're gonna hear from Tim Jones on the club's experience and its role during the past storm, and then Hal and Peter will talk about how the member role has been reorganized. We would ask you, because there's a lot that we're gonna be presenting here, we would ask you to hold questions till the end. We, we do expect questions, we also expect constructive suggestions, because you may, especially those of you who stayed here through the storm, may have some good ideas and suggestions for us going forward. But I would ask, please, hold your questions until the end, there'll be plenty of time to do that, and meanwhile, we'll run out and get that cheese that we needed to eat. Alright, thank you. I'm gonna call on Tim Jones.
Alright, thank you very much. So I'm gonna cover a few things today about Irma, we're gonna talk about the extent of the damage, the status of the recovery efforts, the costs associated with the hurricane, which I'm sure a lot of you are anxious to hear about, as well as the lessons learned from the club's side, and then of course, Mr. Fleming and Mr. Hills will talk about it from kind of the members' perspective. So I have a few pictures that we'll go through on the screen. The pictures really don't do justice to what the community looked like right after the hurricane, for those of you that were here, you can appreciate how things were immediately after the storm. A lot of these photos were taken the day after, and I'll just kinda scroll, scroll through those as we, as we go along. But as far as the extent of the damage, Hurricane Irma was a, basically a direct hit, yeah, the storm went right over Stonebridge, as many of you know, sustained winds of 120 miles an hour and gusts upwards of 140, so you'll see in these photos the extent of some of that damage. Thankfully, Stonebridge sustained minimal structural damage. We sustained a good amount of damage to the tennis courts, we lost a lot of clay, fencing, water fountain, water fountains were all broken, and lighting on the tennis courts. Roof damage on almost all of the common buildings, so that's the clubhouse, the fitness center, the golf course bathrooms, the gate houses, and common, common area and golf course pump stations, so pretty much damage on all the common area roofs, but thankfully it was minimal. A good amount of damage on the perimeters, meaning the fencing, perimeter walls sustained some damage, the signage, you can see we're still working to get signage replaced throughout the community, and we also, because of having lost power at the clubhouse for a little shy of six days, we lost food and beverage inventory of about $20,000. But what I've left out is where the greatest impact was, and that was the landscaping. Mark has estimated the tree loss throughout the whole community is probably in the range of 1,800 to 2,000 trees throughout Stonebridge. To date, 6,100 cubic yards of landscape debris has been removed from the common areas of Stonebridge, and to give you an idea of how much that is, that could fill about 250 dump trucks, if you know the dump truck like you see on the road, it would fill about 250 dump trucks. We're also chipping a good amount of material, if we weren't chipping material, we probably would double that cubic yards, we'd probably be removing twice as much from the community. And to give you, again, to give you an idea of how much that is, that would cover a football field at a height of about five feet. Status of recovery efforts. I'm gonna give you some timeframes for those of you that weren't here, to give you an idea of when things came back online within the community. The roadways were passable within about, within Stonebridge, within about 12 hours after the storm passed, a lot of that's thanks to Mark, as well as members chipping in different areas. The roads were completely cleared the following day after that. Security resumed road patrols and foot patrols the day after the storm. Kathleen, who's here, she was actually here onsite at a member's unit and was out the next morning. Both gate houses were fully staffed within two days, although we didn't have power, they were fully staffed within two days. The clubhouse information technology as far as phones and computers were back online within 12 hours of getting power. That resulted in a golf shop and the front offices being opened within one day of receiving power. The fitness center and pool opened one day after getting power. Food and beverage services resumed 10 days after the storm, with a cocktail party of about 200 members that evening, and that was just a few hours after the boil water notice was lifted. So we have a good, we have a good inventory of paper plates right now, we weren't anticipating to have, to be able to use a dish machine that night. The golf course re-opened about 17 days after the storm. So although, although a lot of that does sound like a fair amount of time for recovery to take place, I've been in touch with other clubs in the community in the, in the Naples area, and a lot of them, depending on the amount of damage they had to their clubhouses, some of those are still closed, a lot were closed for three to four weeks. Same thing with golf courses, we're hearing a lot of golf courses close for about a month, if not more. Gate access as well, although it did take a couple of days to get, to get the gates manned, we're hearing from other communities around Naples where their gate houses were empty with the gate arms off for four to six days, and in some cases, upwards of two weeks, maybe more, that nobody was manning the gates. So kudos to, to Kathleen for all she did to get us up and running. Areas still to be addressed, replacing sod in affected common strip areas, that will be done in November and December, as well as we're focused on removing branches from those areas, those are the common strips that run adjacent to the Master Association main cane roads, sidewalks, making sure that we don't have limbs that are of a safety concern. Complete landscape debris cleanup, that will continue for the coming months. We still have streetlights, roofs on the common buildings, perimeter fencing, and other things still to be addressed, and just like you're dealing with at home, we're having a tough time with contractors and getting that work done. Replacing of trees in the common areas, again, that's those common strips as well as the perimeter buffers, will, will begin next summer and will likely, likely take us into future years. Costs associated with Hurricane Irma. A hurricane assessment will be required to fund hurricane costs, net of insurance proceeds, reserves for designated items, and, and our risk mitigation fund. We have filed a claim, which, which we will provide some coverage. We also have, as I said, the risk mitigation fund, which has $129,000 in that account, the board, I'm assuming, will choose to offset some of the expenses with that. We have reserves for items such as bulkheads, roofs, tennis courts, and fencing, so we have reserves for those type of items. The largest expense will be associated with landscape cleanup and replacement. My current estimate, and I'll emphasize estimate, of the Master Association's Hurricane Irma assessment is in the range of $1,500 to $2,000 per unit in Stonebridge. This will likely be spread over multiple assessments as we become more certain of the cost, and will require review by the finance committee and the board of directors. Additionally, we are dealing with a contract dispute with one of the tree and landscape debris removal companies over a significant, significant billing variance from contracted rates. The association is seeking mediation to settle this matter. Obviously, neighborhoods also have their expenses that they have to deal with outside of the Master Association. On the single-family homes, Hawthorne Estates is looking at about $338 per home in Hawthorne for the landscape debris removal from the lots. Thornbrook is looking at about $166 per door for the same, for the landscape debris removal. Shoreham's debris removal was a bit more minimal, although they're dealing with roof repairs, and those are attached units, so they're dealing with that together. Manchester debris removal hasn't yet been billed to the association, and of course, in the condo associations, you have your own property manager and board of directors that you'll be hearing from about those assessments. I also like to mention too, and I've heard some members talk about this, and I said I was gonna click through pictures and I neglected to do that, so I will, I'll do that as I kinda wrap up. Ironic, ironic that it says "ventry lane." Some of the, some of the members have mentioned about their insurance policy, as there may be a provision for loss assessment coverage, this is more likely to be found in condominium policies, but it can also be provided for in homeowner policies as well, so I would suggest that everyone speak with their, their agent or broker. Lessons learned. And it's not to put a palm tree right next to a privacy wall. For those that are not aware, the clubhouse is not built as a hurricane shelter, so during the storm, it cannot be occupied, but we will do everything reasonably possible to accommodate the members after the storm. The club has an extensive hurricane preparedness plan, which includes preparing and securing the common property and buildings. This plan is now being updated with lessons learned from Hurricane Irma. This includes some of what Mr. Fleming and Mr. Hills will be talking about as far as the Crisis Response Committee, and it includes things such as the clubhouse having sufficient generator capacity to be able to run our larger ice machine which is in the car park, to assist in member needs, generator capacity to provide some cellphone charging for members. While the club will do what it can to assist members, this does not alleviate everyone's personal responsibility. Additionally, at the club level, we need to further investigate a few things. One is the cost benefit of generator capabilities to run all or part of the clubhouse. This was investigated last year, and we were looking at upwards of a quarter million dollars for that type of capacity. Also to investigate recovery services that can be put on retainer for access to items needed but are in limited supply shortly after a hurricane. Also improving email capabilities when the clubhouse is without power. Lastly, I want to say thanks, I've mentioned Mark and Kathleen, but the entire team really pulled together to be able to get the club back in order, and so I wanna thank the, the team members for that, and also thank you as members, everyone came together as, as Mr. Rosiano said, as a community. I also wanna thank the members for their patience and understanding through this whole thing, it's been a challenging time, and for the generosity of what the membership has done for the staff, right, we've had so many people donate clothing, items, even financially, gift cards, you name it, the members outpouring of support has just been heartwarming. And lastly, I will thank, as I speed up the photos, 'cause I haven't been keeping up with it, I wanna thank the board of directors for their guidance and support during this most challenging time, and that's all I have.
Hi everybody, I'm Peter Fleming, for those of you who don't know me, and as I mentioned, we're gonna be talking about lessons learned and plans made. The first lesson learned that I'd like to express is that if there's any place in the world that I have to go through a crisis, I want it to be here. We tried to make a list of all of the people that pitched in to help immediately before, during, and after the storm, the list got very long, and we knew we were gonna miss people, so we decided not to do that, but what, what people did, what you did, was, some examples are, you, you spent the storm together with others to, you know, kinda keep people comfortable. We talked about the outpouring of, of units that were allowed for people to come and use where air conditioning existed. You helped clear the roads, you helped each community by going around and checking to make sure all of your neighbors were okay. The people in Carrington helped remove the dangling rooftops from carports, these were sheet metal, it looked in Carrington like a bomb had gone off. The people that created and joined in on the email string, there was about 100 emails that during the storm, and afterwards, there were messages going around to everybody, and again, got up to about 100. And most of all, I wanna thank Hal for all he did. We've talked about Mark and Tim and Kathleen, and they deserve all the credit we can give them. I do wanna point out that Mark, and no, I'm not gonna ask you to come up here, but Mark actually got his home, got evacuated, mandatory evacuation, so he had to leave home and go stay with friends, and the next morning, when he had committed to get here, he had had the foresight to put a chainsaw in his truck, because he had to use it to get out of the community to get here. He then went over to Tim's house because Tim thought that he was gonna need the chainsaw, turns out didn't need it, but they were working together like that during the whole time. And Kathleen, who stayed here and helped with everything, so instead of trying to name all of you because I can't, would you all please stand up? Please, those who, those who are here, those who shared, those who got here. One of the lessons learned is we have a lot of bashful people in the room, because there were way more than that that helped out. So, how about planning? Hal and I have been spending a lot of time on planning, and I'll give you a little overview about what those things are. We plan, I went to a public speaking class, I know you can't believe that now, but I went to one one time, and they told me what you're supposed to do is tell them what you're gonna tell them, then tell them, and then tell them what you told them. So this is the first part of that. The first part is, in the overview, is we need to have preparations, very careful preparations for what we do before the storm season. We need to prepare as a named storm is approaching. By the way, we were all pushing to get some more planning done very quickly, because since Irma, there have been seven named storms coming out of the Atlantic, so, you know, we need plans and we need them now. Activities that we need to do about 24 hours before the storm hits, activities during the storm, and part of that is activities that you shouldn't be doing during the storm, and what we do immediately afterwards. By the way, as you, I think you all know, the eye of Irma went over the top of us, some of the people who should have been standing if they weren't, were the people that went out and cleared the drains while we were in the eye of the storm, so flooding didn't happen. That's not generally thought to be a good idea. So, preparations prior to the storm season. We want to implement a much stronger procedure than we've used in the past about asking all of us, especially those of us who leave during the summer, to prepare their house for the storm. We've talked about some language we wanna use, and one of, one of the phrases that keeps coming up is, "We want you to prepare your house as if the storm is coming this weekend." Just because we have one this year doesn't mean it's gonna be another 10 years before we get another one, so we wanna be very careful about securing loose items. We are gonna create a hurricane preparedness brochure, there's, there's a great amount of information out on the internet, but we wanna have this brochure in all of our black books, so that you know exactly what to do if you hear of one coming. We are creating neighborhood organization charts, we need, and we had, kind of on the fly, we had neighborhood leaders for every neighborhood in Stonebridge, and, and what we're going to have is those people are gonna have others who can go and knock on doors before the storm, knock on doors to do welfare checks after the storm. So we, we're creating this sort of organizational chart of the things that we need to have. And we're also gonna, it's an interesting phenomenon that I wouldn't have guessed, is that the condos and co-choom communities were, in a sense, better prepared than the single-family homes, and the reasons that's true is that most of them have property managers. Now, a number of the property managers were in Georgia when the storm occurred, but still, they have relationships with roofing contractors and mania contractors, screening people, and we wanna see if there's a better job that we can do for all of Stonebridge to have relationships like that that you can use after a storm goes by. So, the last part of telling you what Hal's gonna tell you, is that we're gonna talk about identifying who is on campus and keeping track of that in a much better way. We need to know if you're here, so we can offer to help, and especially after the storm, we can go by to make sure everybody's okay. We need to identify ahead of time individuals who might need a little extra help, you know, some of us, some of us, notice I said us, are, are older than we used to be, some of us have, you know, infirmities, trouble walking, whatever it is, we wanna know who the people are who need a little bit of an extra help, so we can make sure that we come there early in the process. And, and again, part of that is so that we can assess the damage and make sure that everybody's okay after the storm passes, excuse me. And, and the other thing we're, we're talking a great deal about, we, Tim I think talked about ice production, we wanna do, take a look at the best things that we can do if we have a, an extended outage of pollen, and particularly as houses come back on, not all at the same time, like the Willow Bend people did this time, we wanna make sure that we can offer assistance to people who need it. So, Hal?
Kinda windy yesterday, wasn't it?
Compared to...
I guess our definition of windy has changed a little bit in the last month. Peter was correct, and we can't really, at this point, try to name all the people who did wonderful things, the community worked together unbelievably during the whole time, but one person who deserves an awful lot of credit, of course, is Peter. His leadership and efforts both before, during, and after the storm were remarkable. My mistake was being outside when he was recruiting, and suddenly I was, I was involved in the process. Peter talked about the brochure, it's kind of a checklist, we've been working on that... We've been working on that. That's kind of what individuals will be doing, getting ready for a storm. It's what you can find on the internet. Make sure your car is gassed up, make sure you have non-perishable foods, that kind of thing, phone numbers. What I'd like to talk about is what the plan is for Stonebridge crisis response. Now, when we started this plan, it was right after Irma. We were talking, because if you remember, Maria was bearing down on us, and there was a real possibility that we would come this way too, as hard as that might be to believe. Fortunately, it turned north, and we've been making revisions as a result of comments from people along the way. On Friday, we met with the Neighborhood Leadership Council, did I get that right? And they had some excellent recommendations. We received a note from, I guess Bruce Baker was representing some Torrenbrook residents that had some good comments, and we sat down with Bob Herrick to gain his insights. So, we've been modifying the plan, and we expect to continue to do so, hopefully, as a result of this town meeting as well. All right, now, five days out as the storm approaches, we're going to mail out an email questionnaire to everyone. We want to know if you're in residence or going to be in residence when the storm arrives. And if you are, if you have any special needs, to Peter's point, if it limits your mobility or ability to communicate, we want to know who your wireless provider is, and why would you want that? Well, for those of us who are here, we know that, for whatever reason, Verizon customers were much more likely to have connectivity than some of the other providers, either their towers were up or other towers were down. Now, that's not to mean that'll be the same next time, whatever next time is. I mean, maybe, we don't know whether they were lucky or good. It could be the other provider, but it would be an advantage to us to know who has what, so we know who can communicate and who may not be able to. And the last thing we want to know is if you have any useful equipment, wire cutters, rakes, wheelbarrows, shovels, those kinds of things. Peter discussed the neighborhood captains. Five days out, we'll verify that the captains are here and available, ask them to get zone leaders. Zones will have been defined within each community, and we'll ask the zone leaders to do a house-to-house survey. First of all, to see who's here, to see about special needs, to see if there's any loose items that need to be put away. If the homeowner's there, we'll ask them to put it away. If they're not, we're going to ask them to call the homeowner and have their watchperson take care of it, or make some kind of arrangement. And then we're going to leave a note on the door, if no one's home, because we're well aware that people may be out at any point in time. So now we have a questionnaire and a survey. We'll put that information together. We're going to build an email list. We'll build a list of people with special needs as well, but the email list won't be perfect, but it'll be a lot better than the one we had that Peter referred to. The one that we had was something that Charlie Murphy had put together and was communicating with. We picked it up, we began adding names as we found that people were here. We went through the storm with that list, we came out in the morning, and it was amazing how many people were here who were not on that list, and we'd like that not to happen next time. We'd like to have everybody involved. We're going to ID a member who's off-site. With Irma, we had connectivity problems here. We were fortunate to have Dan Graziano, Dan and Don, we're up in New Jersey, and we were able to use, make use of their capabilities up there. I'd say that Don had the computer capability, and Don was the expertise. But it made a big difference having that capability, and it did not hurt having it be the president of the organization, being the one doing the communicating. Let's see, where are we? Oh, and then Vernon will be, oh, not Vernon, I'm sorry, Peter will be passing out walkie-talkies. Get on course here. Okay. I'm sorry, we're on the 20, with 24 hours before the storm. We got the zone leaders doing another survey. This time, it's a final survey. We want them to update the email list and the special needs list. If the note's still there, we know the person's not there, so we can cross that one off. We don't have to worry about that. We're going to tie a white ribbon to the fixture, the light fixture, so we know who's there. And then we'll take care of any possible projectiles. Hopefully, there's nothing left at that point. Hopefully, that's been taken care of. A lot of people did that kind of thing at the, just before Irma had, I know, I was, this Vernon's name, before Vernon Brown in Carrington took all the furniture from the pool and stuck it in the pool, which saved us from having that crashing around. And Peter will be passing out the walkie-talkies at that point. Okay, now, during the storm, there's not much there, because you shouldn't be doing much. You're supposed to hunker down, stay away from the windows. Ron McQuaid didn't heed that. He was out in the middle of the storm, clearing drains to protect his neighbors from flooding in Shore. We recommend that you don't follow Ron's drains, and I think at this point, Ron would not recommend it to do it either. All right, well, we're going to try to communicate status reports, but with the storm going, we don't know what that'd be. In the highly unlikely event that a eye actually passes over us, you can get out and do some clearing of drains and that kind of thing. Okay, after the storm, we do want the drains cleared up as quick as possible. I mean, a lot of people did that during Irma. I know Steve Delisi and Jerry Messiney were doing it in our area in Hawthorne. I went over to, I was driving by Ponside, and there were a bunch of people out clearing debris, and I looked up, and I wish I had a camera. I swear, Bruce Baker was there. He had a bad back, he had a cane in one hand and a rake in the other. And you mentioned the carports. It was Randy Green over at Carrington who helped clip away some of the metal that was rubbing on the cars. The zone leaders will be doing a welfare check, reporting the results. And when we come to that, we talk about what I'm calling the Middleburg model. I got over to Middleburg on Monday, and they have two groups out going through every property, checking on people, and checking for damage. They'd arranged it ahead of time, they had the keys, and it's an option that any of the condo communities have. You can do that. You have to get the keys. As Peter mentioned, occasionally, the property managers leave, and if they have the keys, that's that, so you need to get them ahead of time. Now, I was just going to say, leave it at that, but at the Neighborhood Leadership Council meeting, Don Fern made a really good point, and I can't do it quite as eloquently as he did, but basically, if there's brain damage in a condo, particularly an upstairs condo, it may cause damage to the lower condos, and perhaps more than one. And we all know what mold is like in Florida. So, I got the sense from the presidents of the associations that they were going to seriously consider establishing a policy for themselves after they went back to their communities. We have a different problem in the single-family homes. The keys aren't all in one place, but we're looking at some possibilities. I might mention here that Carol Gaffney did the welfare check at Ashton Oaks, and Tom Roncic was, went through Carrington right after Irma. We're going to try to communicate status reports, where you can get gas, where food's available, water, particularly ice. We could have done a better job with the ice machine and the cart barn for Irma. I think one of these gentlemen said that the equipment has been upgraded, and that's important, but it was a moot point, because the generator died shortly after the storm, And at this point, I mean, everyone said something about Willow Bend. It was absolutely fantastic. I mean, we sent out an email to all the owners of Willow Bend, particularly the ones who weren't here, asking if we could use their condos. And I called Dan to say the email's out, and he said, "I know, I've already gotten two phone calls." I mean, the calls just kept coming in. And I would also say, some of the other things that happened in Willow Bend, when people heard that, they called friends, and so we never heard about it. They just called friends and said, "Go use my condo." So, awful lot of stuff went on like that. All right, other lessons learned. We have a brochure checklist for most of the stuff, but just a couple of practical things that came out. For the homes that have external lanai's, consider taking out panels of screening. The theory is that reduces the pressure on your cage, and, you know, anecdotally, that seemed to work. Test your equipment, particularly generators. Some people had generators that didn't work. Don't look around, Peter. And speaking of testing, I mean, I think we also fill your bathtub with water, and that was important. You want, it's good for drinking water. If the water pressure isn't there, if they turn off the water, you can use it to flush toilets. But before the storm hits, check and make sure that your drain works effectively. You don't want to wake up in the morning and find out it's gone out, and, you know, a little glad wrap or something like that will keep water in the tub. Peter's suggestion is, you know, for your portable battery-powered devices, flashlights, lanterns, radios, that kind of thing, should have one type of battery. I can tell you, if it's D cell batteries that you need, make sure you get them early. I went into Lowe's five days ahead of time, and they had pallets, I mean, huge pallets out in front of the counters with D cell batteries. I went in the next day, and they were gone, and you couldn't find them anywhere. And Beth and I were down to our last batch when the power came back on, so we were... When the power goes out, consider disconnecting your air conditioner. Now, I suspect if you have a good surge protector, you're probably okay, but I did hear a story about in Willow Bend, where, not Willow Bend, I'm sorry, in Windermere, where when electricity came on, one of the owners there lost their air conditioner from a power surge. If you can imagine, you've been without power for five days, the electricity comes back on, and your air conditioning goes. I don't know that anyone has tried this, but one of the things that we're considering doing is having a smaller generator and an in-room air conditioner. It's considerably more affordable than a full-house air conditioner, and that could very well be a possibility. For those staying, if you filled your freezer up with frozen bottles or freezer packs, as well as frozen food, it lasted for a long time. If it wasn't full, the food seemed to go fairly quickly. But no matter what, eat your ice cream first, so. One advantage that I would mention is, and you had to be here, but you went out at night and with no lights anywhere, the skies were unbelievable, the stars were everywhere. It was really fantastic. That's about the only thing. All right, for future consideration, for the single-family homes, I think Peter kind of covered this, we need to try to establish relationship with contractors and roofers, lanai specialists, and repair people. The condos have a leg up, they have their management companies, and it seemed like they got service a lot quicker than the single-family homes. I know some of us, including me, are still waiting for an inspection for the roof. Storm surge. Everyone was watching the television, everyone saw the bay empty, everybody saw the pictures of the water up this high. And I had trouble with the way it was presented. I mean, to me, 10 feet above sea level at the beach is considerably different than 10 feet above sea level three miles in, but basically, we want to know, what's the danger to Stonebridge? What's our danger here? Well, Peter and I have been trying to get some information on it. You went to the University of Miami, and what was national weather, or?
The Hurricane Center.
The Hurricane Center, okay. And I'm talking to a marine scientist, marine scientist from Florida Gulf Coast. He's working on a study with a group that's a three-year study, and they will build us a model, but at this point, we're not a lot further along than we were when the storm came in. And I think here, they've got the address the possibility of a generator. I think Tim kind of covered that. I would simply say, having a full generator for the clubhouse, to me, talking about it now is quite a bit different than if we'd have talked about it six months ago. I don't know whether we'd come to the same conclusion. But that brings us to the big question, and that's whether we stay or whether you go. And there's no real way, it's an individual decision. There's no way anybody can tell you what to do, but I can tell you what happens and what it feels like. As the storm grows closer, and, you know, the possibilities narrow, and the European model starts pointing in Naples, and, you know, your options become much more limited. Plane flights are full, or they cancel them. Evacuation routes, traffic is jammed. Trying to get gas, first of all, it's hard to find, and then it's unavailable. Get a reservation somewhere. So, the closer to the time the storm comes, the more difficult it is to get out. So, we didn't have any horror stories. I mean, people left at all junctures. People left early, they left late, people left at night, they left during the daytime, they left just before the storm, they left after the storm. And while there's some epic journeys, and some really tough stories, and some close calls, nobody was stranded by the side of the road. That was the thing we were all scared of, you know, having your car pulled alongside of the road, God knows where, where you don't know anybody, and no gas. That didn't happen. But I have to tell you that, in retrospect, bottom line, if you're going to evacuate, unfortunately, there's no getting around the fact that the best and safest time to leave is before you know the storm's going to hit. And though you know it, know it's going to hit you here, so. Okay, Dan, you going to do the question part?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I hope we're going to do the answer part. But no, we aren't just looking for questions. We're looking for comments, ideas, instructive ideas, that sort of thing. So, if you can, there's a microphone here. Use that, and everybody can hear what the question is, and we'll try and answer it. Okay? So, who's first? Terry?
Somebody's got to be first.
That's right.
This is primarily for the condo owners, and if there's condo owners that don't know, you may have an HO6 rider on your policy, which covers an assessment for some kind of damage in a case like this. I would first, I talked to my insurance company just shortly before I came to the meeting, and I didn't get all of the answers, so I'd suggest you contact your insurance company and find out, first of all, what's covered. For example, my, the person I talked to wasn't sure whether cleanup was covered as part of the assessment, but they were sure that any damage was covered. One thing that Dan brought up to me, and I didn't ask, is, does it cover the master association damage, or if you're in a condo, does it only cover your condo association damage? So, another question everybody has to ask their insurance company. One thing I did ask was, what kind of documentation are they expecting in order to cover the assessment? And she gave me two answers. One of them was, you need a copy, they will need a copy of the master policy, which means, I don't know how many condos we have, but you may be printing a lot of copies of the master policy. And the other thing she said was a copy of the assessment itself documenting exactly what it's for. They want, I'm sure they want the master policy, because they want to know what was covered in the master policy, so that they're not double-paying for whatever you're going to bill them for. But those are just a couple of points that I wanted to bring up to people who are condo owners and may or may not know about the HO6. One other thing, generally speaking, the HO6 covers up to $2,000 in a One other thing, generally speaking, the HO6 covers up to $2,000 in assessment. I was told in talking to my insurance company, because we have a rider on our policy for jewelry, that our assessment goes a lot for HO6, the maximum goes a lot higher than $2,000 because of the rider we have for the jewelry. So, depending on what the assessment's going to be, it doesn't sound like it's going to be over $2,000 right now.
Well, now that we know you have that coverage, we may...
I'm shouting, I'm shouting.
Anyway, those are just some points for the condo owners that I thought might help them, and maybe help the board in knowing what to expect when the people start asking for these things.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Really? The cheese isn't all that good. Thank you. Rich?
Is there any way the clubhouse could hook up to the emergency grid? For any reason?
Well...
That would be used.
We don't know what the emergency grid is.
It's right across the street.
Well, it's not that simple. Everything we've learned, and Peter's the best one to answer this, is that it's much more complicated. I looked at it the way you did, is, why can't we just plug Stonebridge in, out of the street, and run everything? But Peter, why don't you talk about that?
We were able to get in touch with somebody from Florida Power and Light, who actually knew a lot about this question. And the way, what it turns out to be, is that the north side of Stonebridge is on the Amokalee grid, and the south side is on the airport grid. The Amokalee grid does in fact go, this we thought was an urban legend before, but does in fact go to NCH down the road. However, what happens is, if you think of a tree, there's the trunk of the tree, and that's what's going down Amokalee towards the hospital. The branches come off into Stonebridge, and then they branch out from there. And at every point that they branch, there is a breaker, a circuit breaker. And what happens is, as those things pop, as they disconnect, it's not as simple as when the hospital gets power. While they do emphasize getting hospitals with power sooner, it's where the breakers happen to branch off. So, yes, part of us are on the hospital grid, but it's really not as helpful as that sounds.
Okay. One other part of the commercial, I was in Costco a couple weeks ago, and they had these solar-powered generators, okay? Okay? For condo owners.
Anyone else? Does that mean we did that good a job?
Yes.
Yes.
It wasn't that good. Wait a minute.
Just a suggestion, and I don't know if it would work or not, but instead of trying to collect everybody's keys, especially if your property owner or your house watcher is gone, maybe in the survey that goes out a few days before the storm, you could just get their garage code. Because the owner can... Never mind.
That was, I forget her name from Saturday Night Live, but that was a never mind. At any rate, for those of you who may not have heard that, there was a suggestion about possibly getting garage codes rather than keys, and it was pointed out that that's not going to do you a lot of good if there's a power failure or something. Kevin?
Dan, I had two questions or comments. First of all, since there's no distinction in property taxes here in Collier County between private road and public road, people who live in Naples Park or Victoria Shores or Port Royal, they're getting some of the removal costs picked up by the county, the state, or FEMA. And if I recall in '04, '05, when Jim Hall was president, I think we had someone help us pick up the cost of debris removal portion. My second question or comment would be, since the club doesn't pay any federal taxes, and this is really a property loss, is there any way we could talk to our accounting firm and have the assessment worded in such a way that we potentially, as taxpayers, could take that as a loss? Thank you.
Okay. We'll have to get that answer from an accountant, certainly. But Tim can answer the first one.
So, after Hurricane Wilma, the county did come through and pick up debris at the curbside. And that was kind of a big to-do back then, because there's so many private gated communities that are private roads. Collier County actually had to apply with FEMA to come inside the gates of all the communities. And because there are so many gated communities within Collier County, they were able to work that out. They did that again, this time around. The one thing that we learned from Wilma was, it took them, I'm guessing, it was probably four to six weeks, it may have been longer, before they came and picked up the debris curbside. So shortly after the storm, I was in touch with Mr. Graziano as far as recovery efforts and where we were going, knowing that the damage was much more significant than what we dealt with with Wilma, with, after Irma. The thought was, let's not wait for the county to come in and do the debris pickup, we contracted to have the debris picked up. You'll see some communities in town that still have, you know, six, eight-foot piles, you know, they're waiting for the county. The one thing that came into consideration there too was, after Wilma, we ended up replacing a lot of sod and common strip, because that's where everything was piled up, and that's a responsibility of the master association. The cost to replace all that sod was more than what it costs to have a contractor come in and remove the debris at the curbside. So we made the decision to do it sooner than later. Just on that comment too earlier, Mr. Berry made the comment about the insurance. From a single homeowner perspective, definitely check with your agent, and if you don't have the coverage, it's worth looking at. I know for myself personally, after dealing with this, I contacted my insurance, we live in a small HOA, I do not have that coverage on my policy. I have an HO3 policy that does not cover it. But they said you could add that to your coverage for $5,000 a year of coverage for $15, or $10,000 a year for $25. We live in a smaller HOA without a golf course and a clubhouse, you know, so for $15 a year, I have the assurance that if there is an assessment going forward, it's not going to help me with Irma, but going forward, there's coverage there. So anyone with the, with single-family homes should look at that too. Any other questions?
Just to follow on, the decision to have the debris removed at ourselves rather than wait was occasioned by not only the loss of the sod under the debris piles, but we were looking at an imminent hurricane coming, and maybe more. So having all that debris around was going to create added risk, plus there was some concern about safety, people walking, using the community, and also the possibility of pests and rodents and vermin kind of making a home in those places. So, there were a lot of considerations in addition to aesthetics in terms of not waiting for Collier County. Jim?
We all joke about garage code codes and all that, now working without power. There is a very simple solution. We've done it in our home, we've done it in our condo, you put a mechanical lock box on your door or attached to the wall next to the front door, it has a key inside of it, you punch a three- or four-digit code in, open it up and take the key out. That might be a solution for some of the single-family homeowners, you put one of those on the outside, and then pass out the key code to someone, they get in the house that way. You also have to be concerned about some of these things that are shuttered on the outside, if you want to get in, you got to take the shutter off the front door first.
That box you were talking about that holds the key, that's not operated by electricity?
Yeah, no battery, no electricity.
He's right about this.
Can you give us some idea as to what guidelines you'll use to decide which trees to replace? I assume we're not going to replace every tree, and we're not going to try to replace it with a mature tree, but what will the guidelines be?
Well, a lot's going to depend on where the tree is. If you're talking about street trees, it's probably going to be a standard of trying to get back to where we were in terms of the number of trees, obviously not the size of the trees. In terms of the berms, we're going to look at different considerations. You know, along 3 and along 15, you're kind of open to the public, whereas along 4, there really aren't homes over there. So, considering what we're dealing with, whether we want to get a little extra height because of what's next to us, that's going to have an effect on it too. I think that that's probably going to be the prime subject of the discussion of the grounds, facilities, and security committee going forward, working with Mark to come up with those ideas. What we're confronted with, and you need to understand this, is, I look today as we play golf, the landscaping along 11, where we replaced all the landscaping, is fantastic, and I think it's only been there about a year and a half or so. But I would call that the Rolls-Royce of landscape replacement. We're not going to be able to afford that on the areas that we have to take care of now. But all of those things are going to be considered through our Director of Grounds and through the Board's Committee on Grounds. Anyone else? People are standing up and leaving, yes, Mr. Cronin.
It's like to say for somebody who's not here during the storm, thanks to Al, Peter, Tim, and others, you guys did a good job.
Thank you. Okay. On that note, I believe that the bar is open for happy hour. Let's have a party. Thanks.